Seven o'clock, we'll go ahead and start this regular council meeting for Tuesday, July 24, 2012.
Councilmember Elliott?
Here.
Councilmember Rogie?
Here.
Councilmember Sandahl?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem FitzHenry?
Here.
And Mayor Gotel is absent this evening.
And I'd like to make a motion that we excuse Mayor Gotel for this evening.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have a speaker for the open forum, Camille DeSantis, if you want to come in and sign in.
City council members, I think it was Yogi Berra who once said, "It ain't over until it's over." In this regard, I have some observations and comments about the garage site affair. One thing I know is that there still exists the need for two and three-bedroom units for families with children. I saw an obvious equating of workforce families with the poor, crime risks, public housing, Section 8, and people who do not deserve safe, decent, attractive, and affordable housing. We heard we need to be like Edina, go upscale. We need doctors, lawyers, and professionals. This is the denunciation of, quote, "those people," unquote. I heard a failure or unwillingness to accept the realities of Richfield. We historically trail the area median income by at least $20,000. We are a 99 percent community of hard-working people. The lack of a, quote, "formal housing policy," unquote, was a known fact from day one. We heard more of a focus on the process and the way, and very little on the need. The Hunk Comprehensive Plan did not seem to matter, that the proposal plan essentially met the plan requirements. So what do we have left? A non-tax-producing piece of land now in its six years, I think, of emptiness. The loss of a $13 million tax credit developers and cities vigorously compete for. Families with children still need two- and three-bedroom units. The SOS group appears to have set the standard for policymakers on how developers may be treated and what goes into the garage site. The SOS group stated that Pillsbury Commons needed to be shut down because, quote, "we need a win," unquote, implying they are having a tough time, and so are others. So Pillsbury should not exist, Pillsbury Commons. We have a series of policymaker decisions with shutdown Pillsbury Commons which were essentially based on SOS fears, intimidation, and distorted strategies insinuating Pillsbury Commons was destined to be a low-income, segregated community of people of color and one-parent families with children. Finally, one objective observer observation in conclusion of the Pillsbury Commons experience is that they may have satisfied legal planning and development requirements, but essentially it was a waste of time of policymakers, staff, the developer, and community participants. Why? Because without a formal housing policy in place, the groundwork was set from the beginning of the development application to deny development for workforce families. What ensued essentially was, in my opinion, a charade, a game, stretched out with everyone going through the motions, and the losers were workforce families. Hopefully, in the future, policymakers certainly should listen to residents' concerns, but hopefully policymakers will agree that their responsibility also is for the silent ones whose needs are there and maybe are too busy working and raising their families to show up at city council meetings and make local and make loud noises for their cause. The hard-working, silent ones are the people who make our community what it is, the urban hope town we brag about and are proud of.
Could we have you come to a summary pretty soon?
I have one more sentence.
Okay.
It's real short. And all I want to say there is these folks deserve more respect and recognition in the future. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Seeing no others for the open forum, I'd have everybody join me in the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, ask for the approval of the minutes of special council work session of July 10, 2012, and the regular council meeting of July 10, 2012. So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, we have a council discussion. I believe I'll start on the right side with Pat.
Thank you. Couple things. Came to the city planning commission meeting last night and was interested in a conditional use permit that was put before the planning commission, sorry, in regards to a full-service restaurant that is going to be developed on the strip mall, 64th and Lindell. There's the two parcels there right next to the new apartment building. And the developer came in, was asking for a conditional use permit, doesn't have a tenant yet, but it's for a full-service restaurant with liquor service. That's going to take about 2,000 square feet in there, and he had nothing but excitement when he talked about the development on Lindell and our new downtown and what's going on. And he'd indicated that he's got two fairly significant prospects of moving and taking over the restaurant. It's not going to be, he hopes not to have a chain or anything like that. It's going to be privately owned, something that is developed for serving families and sit-down dinners with the liquor service and everything. And I guess I just wanted to throw that out there because it's nice to see that that was kind of below the radar. I wasn't even aware of it. And things are happening in the city and moving forward, and I think it's all pretty exciting, and I think it's going to spread both east and west from Lindell and involve the entire community. So I think that's just a great start. The second thing is, I don't know how many people are aware of it, this is kind of under the radar also, but the Penn Avenue Group, the Penn Central Group, received a grant for an open street celebration that's going to take place on September 16, up and down Penn Avenue, running from, I believe, 63rd to 75th Street. There's a significant amount of activity that's anticipated, and there's always room for more. And I think Jim Topitzoffer is going to come up and show a couple of things that have been raised in terms of concerns. And one was if we shut down the street, what's public safety, is it going to be impacted either for police service or fire service? And there's been a plan developed with all the public safety directors and chiefs, and Jim can show you how the city has come together to make sure we can accommodate any problems with that. And also, I see that Tom Rubine is coming up. I think that both Jim and Tom can give you a little bit more insight to what's going on, what kind of help we still need to make this a real success and get the community totally involved. So you guys can take over.
Thank you, Councilmember Elliott and city council members. With me is Tom Rubine from the Penn Central Group. Tom is actually chairing the event, and I'm helping as well. We've got a whole team of people that are working on this.
You understated.
So let me first explain what an open streets event is and the purpose of it and how it benefits the community. You can chime in anytime you want, Tom. What an open street event is, is where we close a good section of road off to vehicular traffic. And it's allowing, inviting, and encouraging non- or alternative use of the street. So it would be bicycling, walking, rollerblading, playing, just thinking about using the street differently. And it's all on a theme of improving the health of the community, of looking at the community's infrastructure and how we do things, and thinking about Richfield as a healthier place to live. And the city did receive a grant for the amount of $10,000 from Blue Cross Blue Shield to assist with the costs of this event, because there are a lot of costs associated with closing the road. There's barricades we have to purchase, there's police that we have to hire on overtime to come, and those costs are completely covered by the grant. And so a similar event was done, a very successful one, might I add, last year and this year on Lindell Avenue, just north of Richfield, and tremendously successful. The community just really embraced it. Businesses loved it. Some businesses reported their highest sales just because of the amount of traffic that would be introduced to the businesses along that road.
One of the residents that lived along, or lives along Lindell, also mentioned that because she lives on Lindell, they don't get to have block parties. They don't get to have any of the events that somebody would on a residential street. So for them, it was an opportunity to be able to do something like that. And here in Richfield, we have some tremendous block parties, but not often on Penn Avenue. So we're looking forward to having the larger community come in and do things. I mean, one of the things that we have lined up is a group will come in and do square dancing on Penn Avenue and ballroom dancing, as well as belly dancing at Ada Restaurant, belly dancing lessons, so we can sign any of you up for that. But the overall theme is to build community and get people out, get people doing something, some kind of activity. One of the groups is going to have pogo sticks. I had not thought of that, just to let people jump up and down on a pogo stick. Again, just activity. And we are doing everything we can to accommodate people with access and so on. But I think it's going to be a tremendous addition to our usual Penn Fest, and the businesses have been very enthusiastic in embracing this and coming up with all sorts of ideas.
I'll finish with, Pat, you mentioned there was some concerns raised at a recent building, or I'm sorry, a recent Penn Central meeting, meeting of the businesses along Penn Avenue. And so the first concern was, okay, you're closing down Penn Avenue, will the police and the fire have good access to the road, and will the closing of the street impede any of their services? And right from the start, we did involve our fire department, our fire chief was involved in the planning of this, as well as our police department, on what we would do to ensure, you know, that we could do this safely. And I've got our detour route on the screen here. The route actually goes from 76th Street all the way up to 63rd, and it detours west to York from 76th Street up to the crosstown. And we're allowing east-west traffic to cross where there are stoplights, and that is where 66th Street intersects Penn Avenue and where 69th Street intersects Penn Avenue. So the police and the fire, they feel like that's adequate for what they need. And this, by the way, is closed down from, the event's run from noon to 5:00 on the 16th of September. Another thing that was brought up is how do the residents that need to, that live on Penn Avenue, how do they get out of, how do they get out of there if they need to get out of there with their car during that time? And we're making provisions to have them escorted. We'll have people at every intersection looking for cars, that sort of thing, and they'll be escorted to the nearest intersection, and they'll open the barricades up. So we're trying to accommodate the residents the best we can. And then lastly, there was some question about, you know, did you come to the neighborhood and ask? And have you talked to this event about, directly with the neighbors that live on Penn Avenue yet? And the answer is, we intend to. We have a team lined up quickly from Dewtown that are charged with door knocking. They'll be knocking at every single resident along Penn Avenue, talk about the event, give them the facts, talk about concerns, but I think to encourage them to participate. And I think there's a lot that residents can do just to have fun using the street without cars.
Thank you, Jim. Tom, is there some contact points or some information you can pass out for people that may want to participate or have ideas or want to get involved?
Our, the website, richfieldpenncentral.com, I'm sorry, penncentralofrichfield.com, has the links for it. Certainly anybody could call me or contact me or Jim, and we'd be happy to talk to them about any concerns or if they want to participate, we can certainly help them out with that. We have talked to the businesses, and prior to entering into the planning for this, we had discussed this with a number of businesses along the way before we proceeded. Would this be a good idea? Are you interested in doing something like this? I mean, after all, it's an endeavor to close down that length of an avenue, and we got nothing but positive responses, unless you want to consider the odd response of, "Are you guys nuts?" But we did, we did talk to businesses, and even those right in the area just south of 66th, 67th, and so on. Uncommon Sports, for instance, is a business that is generally open on Sunday, and they were very enthusiastic about doing it. So given those responses, we proceeded to go ahead and apply for the grant and to apply for the permit from Hennepin County, which was also granted to us to close the street. So we've tried to make as many provisions for folks as we can. We're going to continue to talk to people and again, try to, you know, alleviate any inconvenience that we can. But mostly, we're aimed at trying to have a few hours of a lot of fun on an avenue that ordinarily people can hardly cross the street at, so.
Great, thank you. I'm looking forward to it.
That it then?
That's it.
Okay. Fred, do you have anything?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to respond to Camille's words that he just told us at the start of the meeting. Pillsbury failed for a number of reasons. It didn't fail because of SOS. It failed because of density. It failed because of the plan constantly changing. It failed because we were never allowed to vote on anything to give them direction that whether we liked what was going on or not. It failed because they came here originally with townhomes that were going to be owner-occupied, and that changed. I would hope that you would hop on the old wagon and get us going in the direction of what we all believe in, but yeah, lawyers, doctors, they're welcome here in Richfield. So are a lot of other people. And do we want to be more like Edina than some other communities? I would hope so. We need to think big, and we don't need to have people come here and pretend they're somebody else and then find out that they actually worked for the person who was trying to build this project and not tell us that. There's a whole bunch of things that happened in that thing, but now we're going to move on. And I don't know what it's going to end up being, but we're going to get something there. So that's all I want to say about that issue. One of the things, I think we all got a, I had a phone call with Steve, our city manager, Steve Devich, and he made a memo about, I wasn't aware of this, and I don't know if you all are, that we only have two CSOs now instead of three. Sometime in 2009, the third one was taken out of the budget, which means that, and I didn't realize this, for two and a half or three years, we've had no inspections of the city as we had set up a plan to do one-third of all the houses from any direction, but to do one-third of all the houses in three years. I see that we're going back in the same direction again. I brought this up with Steve, and I thought he would, you know, I didn't know until today that he wasn't going to be here tonight, but I did not want to wait another two weeks. That really bothers me. He said that he does not want to put this back in the budget. He wants to keep the tax base down as low as he can, and I understand that. But I think that we should have a discussion on this in the next city council meeting about whether we want to start a plan where we did something and then we just walk away from it. I think it's going to come back to bite us if we don't get another CSO or somebody. Maybe they don't have to be CSOs, I don't know. Maybe that city staff can look at that. But we need to have that inspection go back that we set up, that every third of the houses in Richfield get inspected every three, or that all of them will be inspected within the three-year period. I really believe it helped. It gave people direction on what they need to do, and I am going to favor that we go back and do whatever it takes to get that back in the budget.
Sue, do you have anything?
I do. I don't know if any of you have been by. The former Bridgman site now going to be Pizza Luce Restaurant. They've got in their landscaping, and it's gorgeous. It's just such a nice, bright green place out on 66th Street, and they're going to be opening shortly, so please plan to attend and show support for a new local business. The other thing I just wanted to bring to the attention, I do this every two weeks. Next Thursday, there's going to be another concert in Augsburg Park. This one is going to be The Resistors, and it should be a great concert, and people are encouraged to go, and hopefully we won't get a deluge.
Yeah. Sue, are you done?
Yeah, thanks.
Bringing up Pizza Luce, I just thought of, we also got a notice that the Candlewood Suites Hotel has done a major renovation in millions of dollars, and we're going to be taking a look at that here in a couple of days. So residents of Richfield should know that our hotel there on 77th Street has spent a lot of money to completely refurbish their hotel. I'm looking forward to going to the open house and see what it looks like now.
Okay. I have one more, I'm sorry. And that is that the August 4, which is a Saturday, from 12:00 to 5:00, the Richfield Historical Society is having a Bartholomew House birthday. So that should be a fun event. I don't know, we did get a mailing on it, if you remember, but put it on your calendar because there'll be lots of interesting things happening. That's 12:00 to 5:00, Saturday, August 4. I think they're going to have a birthday cake, if I remember correctly, to celebrate. And now I'm trying to remember if it was 160 years old. I don't recall the number, but it's a big, big number.
August 4?
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Okay, then, I have one item. I'd like to bring the Richfield Foundation up and have them introduce themselves and tell them what great news they have.
Well, thank you. I appreciate coming here tonight. I appreciate your hospitality from the council. My name is Gordon Hanson, representing the Richfield Foundation tonight, and I'm joined by Susan Rosenberg, who is also a board member of the Richfield Foundation. And we have some exciting news. We've, last couple of months, we've been holding a raffle as a fundraiser, awarding five individuals sets of Twins tickets down in the Legends Club of Target Field. And tonight at 5:00, we drew our names for our winners, and so I will be announcing them. But just a quick mention about the Richfield Foundation. We're actually a fairly old institution in town, 30-plus years we've been around. And what we do is we raise funds, we have an endowment, that once a year, we look at good projects that are going around in town, and we grant monies to these projects. Our foundation mission, we have three kind of focus areas. We look at projects that will ensure successful kids, secure families, and a stronger community. And so we look at projects that are going on that could kind of fit under that umbrella of those three focus areas. And each year, we grant somewhere around $10,000, you know, give or take a little bit from that amount, and usually contribute money to about, you know, six, seven different nonprofits or projects that are happening in town that will help build the community in these three areas. Our fundraiser, we had the raffle ticket fundraiser, was to help generate funds for our foundation. So it was a very worthy cause, and I'd like to acknowledge Richfield Bloomington Honda for donating these tickets. They were very generous in doing that. And we're also going to be sharing some funds with our partner in the raffle, which was Richfield Baseball, Inc., which is our local Richfield Youth Baseball Association that serves kids from age four to 12. And my son has graduated from that, but I can tell you now, if you're not connected with that, that is a wonderful organization. Baseball is booming in Richfield, and it's much to the credit of the leadership of Richfield Baseball, Inc. So at this point, I'd like to announce the winners of our raffle. An August 13 game, Lori Wayman. August 27, Hadley Barrows. September 9, Carol Cleven. September 11, Barb Thuris. And September 16, Lynn Alexander. And being a foundation like this, I just want to mention to our viewing audience that if you're looking for a real positive, strong way to get involved in the community and make a positive difference, we'd sure love to have you onboard the Richfield Foundation because we do grant about $10,000 a year, but we receive more requests for funds than we have funds to give. And we'd sure would like to work with more partners, build our endowment, and be able to do more to make this a stronger, better community. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask for council approval of the agenda. So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent calendar, we'll go with the acting city manager.
Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. Consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on those items will be necessary. For tonight's consideration, item A, consideration of approval of post-issuance debt compliance policy and updated fund balance policy. Item B, consideration of approval of resolution authorizing prepayment and redemption of $750,000 taxable GO improvement bonds, Series 1997, dated December 1, 1997. Item C, consideration of approval of resolution authorizing refunding of $3,470,000 GO tax increment bonds, Series 2003C, dated December 30, 2003, with $2,560,000 taxable GO tax increment refunding bonds, Series 2012B. Item D, consideration of approval of resolution authorizing submittal of grant application to Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development for pedestrian access improvements in Lakes at Lindell area. Item E, consideration of approval of award of contract to Metro Elevator, Inc., for repairs to existing elevator at Richfield Community Center as required by state code in the amount of $35,335. And item F, consideration of approval of award of contract to Midwest Elevator and Drilling for installation of air conditioning unit to existing elevator at Richfield Community Center as required by state code in the amount of $15,317. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
Thank you, acting city manager. And I ask for approval of the consent calendar. All in favor say aye.
Discussion?
Okay, first, second, third. All in favor say aye.
Quick question, comment.
Okay.
I just wanted to report that there's a couple interesting things on here. One of them is we're doing, I forget the terminology, it's a, one is we're paying off one bond early, which is going to save us about $2,000 in interest, which we appreciate staff paying attention to. And the other is a prepayment and a redemption and a reissuance of bonds. Because of the lower interest rates now, we will end up saving about another $56,000 in interest. And so kudos to the staff for finding it and to elders for telling us, yes, we can do it and save some money. Thank you.
I'd like to make comment, too. I did talk to her before the meeting, and I think they're going to bring it up on the 13th again, give us the final dollar amount that we are saving, because it's only right now, just a good guesstimate, but we'll be hearing good news, I'm sure, on the 13th. Anything else before I call it out? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, item number five, Pat.
Thank you, Your Honor. This item for consideration is the consideration of second reading of an ordinance amendment related to the enforcement of Minnehaha Creek Watershed District's stormwater management rule. Some background information, much of the eastern section of Richfield Falls within the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District. The city has sole regulatory authority within city boundaries with respect to MCWD's erosion control, flood plan alteration, wetland protection, and stormwater management rules. In order to maintain regulatory authority of the stormwater management rule, the attached city ordinance must be adopted by the city council. The MCWD rules apply to properties within the watershed district boundaries even without the adoption of the proposed amendments. On July 14, 2009, the city council approved a memorandum of understanding between the MCWD and the city, allowing the city to maintain exercising sole regulatory authority within city boundaries with respect to matters subject to regulation under MCWD's erosion control. under MCWD's erosion control, flood plan alteration, wetland protection, and stormwater management rules. As part of the memorandum of understanding agreement, the city also agreed to update the city ordinances and zoning code to comply with the district's rules. Minnehaha Creek Watershed District's 2011 rule, the proposed code amendments support the following 2011 MCWD regulation changes within the area of its jurisdiction. Required management activities are based on size and disturbance area, and previously it was size and type of project. Takes into, it takes into account changes in pervious cover, built upon non-degradation for phosphorus, and has added a volume control component to certain cases. Staff is recommending that the proposed financial assurance subdivision be adopted citywide. The financial assurance subdivision allows the city to require a performance bond, letter of credit, or other financial assistance for any project that requires installation of a stormwater best management practice in order to assure proper construction and maintenance will be completed as part of the project. Um, policy considerations, the proposed ordinance amendments are consistent with the memorandum of understanding between the city of Richfield and MCWD. With that in mind, I would at this time move to approve the second reading of an amended ordinance related to Minnehaha Creek Watershed District's stormwater management rule, and approve resolution for summary publication of an ordinance amendment to section 429.
And, yeah, if I can, Pat, I'm going to go put this up on the, on the screen, just so people can see.
It's already up.
I just think it might be interesting for people at home or in the audience. The peachy colored area on the far northwest, northeastern quadrant is the Minnesota, Minnehaha Watershed District. So that's the section we're dealing with. And interestingly enough, Richfield has three watershed districts. We have the Bloomington one, and down in the corner in the green, in the southwestern corner, is the Nine Mile Creek area. So...
You know, if I may, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, when we entered into the first memorandum of understanding, we'd had a open meeting, and we had various citizens that lived or had some concerns about some of the ponding areas within the Minnehaha Watershed District, and had concerns about what they could or could not do into tool sheds and some of those. And, and my recollection is, is that, uh, we were able to address those, and, and staff at least put their minds at ease that it wasn't going to be impacted. And I'm assuming, given the fact that we, we entered into that memorandum of understanding in 2009, it's now 2012, and we're renewing it, that there's been no negative impact on anybody that had those, that at least voiced those concerns in 2009. So I'm assuming everything has gone according to plan, is working well for the citizens by virtue of the fact we haven't heard any, any problems or complaints.
We've got Mr. Eastling here to tell us.
Yes, there's not a substantive change really, uh, from these, in these rules. One of the things we're putting into this is when the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District changes their rules, we won't have to come back and change our ordinance, because we're, we're, uh, now applying them by reference through, through this ordinance here. And so we won't have to keep bringing back these changes to you. And this allows city staff to apply these rules and use our judgment rather than have, as part of the development process, rather than having them go separately to the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District Board.
Was that not at least part of the discussion we had back in 2009?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. That's what I thought.
And I gotta, just to clarify, I thought this is not going to just do, uh, Minnehaha, but we're doing it citywide.
There's part of this we are doing citywide, and part of it we're not. The part we're doing citywide is the assurance bond. Right now, we would like across the city, if a developer comes in, sometimes he's not able to get all the stormwater elements in place when he needs to maybe open up the business or something. And this allows us, in lieu of, of holding, preventing him from opening his business, he can put up some cash with different surety to make sure that he will eventually take care of these stormwater concerns.
Oh, okay.
And this allows that to be done citywide. The, the rules, the water, the, the watershed districts have different rules, and so Minnehaha Creek, we agree to apply their rules in their area, but Nine Mile Creek, for example, they don't necessarily, they are not necessarily consistent, and we'll have to apply those other rules differently there.
Okay, thanks for that explanation.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Fred Rogie.
Okay, this is a consideration of a disciplinary hearing and a resolution regarding civil enforcement for several alcohol establishments in Richfield that recently underwent alcohol compliance checks conducted by the Richfield Public Safety Staff, and, and they failed to, um, they failed by selling alcohol to underage youth. On June 9th, 2012, Richfield Public Safety Staff conducted alcohol compliance checks at all of the establishments in Richfield that sell alcohol. They were assisted by three underage youth that were all 19 years of age. These compliance checks were the first compliance checks conducted in 2012. The businesses that sold alcohol to underage youth on June 9th, 2012 are El Halpino Market, 1430 East 66th Street, Patrick's French Bakery, 2928 West 66th Street, and the Super America Store at 7500 Lindell Avenue South. Our policy is that as a violation of Minnesota State Statute and the city ordinance to sell alcohol to underage youth, Resolution 9511 specifies certain improper conduct of alcohol license holders and delineates the progressive discipline that can be expected when a violation occurs, such as the sale of an alcohol to minors. Staff recommends that the city council suspend the licenses to sell alcohol for five consecutive days and to levy a fine against establishments in the amount of $1,000 for a first violation. Staff is also proposing that the first time violating establishments attend a mandatory meeting with public safety, direct, with the public safety director to present their individual establishment's plans to ensure that they are eliminating any future actions of this kind. In addition, one staff member, preferably the manager, must attend an alcohol compliance and sales awareness presentation conducted by a private firm approved by public safety with all the costs to be paid by the establishment. These requirements must meet, must be met by August 24th, 2012. The fine being recommended at this time is intended to recover 100% of the cost for conducting the compliance checks and to penalize the businesses punitively. Compliance checks will continue to occur in the future. The council may consider taking more or less severe action against establishments that sold alcohol to underage youths. However, that would deviate from the guidelines set for progressive discipline in Resolution 9511.
So, um, in the past, we've had this set up a little differently to read. I, I don't know that we were reading resolutions before. Are we going to take them one at a time or just deal with all of them at once?
Well, this is a hearing, so I suggest we, uh, look and see if we have members in the audience that want to speak based on this, so. Um, is there members from any of these groups? If you want to come up to the podium, state your name and who you are.
The businesses.
Our business.
Uh, my name is Bill Schnobrick. I'm the director of store operations for Super America. Um, I'm not here to dispute the charge. We clearly failed, clearly failed the city, failed our own mission statement, which calls for us to be a responsible retailer, a responsible member of the community. I just wanted in 30 seconds or less, just to give you a synopsis of how we try to train our people to avoid these instances from happening. A new employee at Super America starts a day one. The first hour there, they spend an hour on alcohol and tobacco compliance. Um, we take it as far as to ask them to sign a commitment letter that they'll follow our policies. Um, every six months, we retrain all 2,500 of our store employees, again, asking them to re-sign the personal commitment letter. Um, this year, we'll spend $50,000 chain-wide on a third-party contractor that shops all of our stores once a month to make sure we're in compliance. If we're not, then employees terminated. Um, field personnel lose their monthly bonuses. This person that failed this, um, compliance check was terminated on the spot. We take it very seriously. Um, we have a responsibility to the community. We understand that. Beer sales in our stores represent less than 1% of our total business. It's not a matter of lost revenue. Um, it doesn't contribute that much, but our customers do expect us to provide it. And for that, my reason to be here is to ask if there is any alternative to the five-day suspension.
Well, I guess I can say from being on here in almost eight years now, that we've never had a, where we didn't invoke the, the fine, because we want to be consistent with everybody. Otherwise, everybody'd be coming in trying to not pay the fine or...
I understand.
Do you use any method like, like our liquor stores do, where you can't open a, a cash register unless somebody gives you the ID? And in our liquor stores here, I always tell people, we can't even buy a lottery ticket when you go into a liquor store here without showing an ID, because the register won't open it with the system we have in place.
Correct. We, we do have a method. Um, please understand and not excuse Northern Tier Energy purchased Super America in December 1st of 2010. We transitioned away from the Speedway or Marathon Oil, who our agreement was, they took everything. They took all of our software, all of our personnel records. So everything that we operate in the store is brand-new. Um, our registers are set up that you must, um, swipe the driver's license before you can process a sale. Unfortunately, in this case, we didn't do it.
Do you know how that happened, then? I mean?
Yeah, clearly.
How did they get the register open if they didn't swipe it?
It can be overridden. You can, there's a button on there that says, um...
So somebody overwrote it intentionally?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I'd like to mention the comment here that, uh, according to what we have from the police report, the servant at Super America did not even ask to see the ID.
Correct. And I've, I've got to be honest with you, I viewed the film. All the stores have cameras. This individual is clearly not of age. There's, there's no question. We, we did not follow one of our policies. We blew it on all, on all levels.
I appreciate your candor. Sometimes it, we don't get that. And so I appreciate that. I, I believe you will probably do something to correct this, for sure.
Okay. Yeah, I'm intend to go with Fred that, uh, not to change anything, because we set these policies. They're very strong. They're strong for a reason, because we've had incidents with it, and, uh, I find no, I guess mitigating circumstance to say that it was changed. Uh, any other discussion?
Okay, I appreciate your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from any of the affected businesses that would like to come up and speak?
Okay.
Can we, can we ask if there's a representative from the businesses?
Yes, there's a representative from any of the businesses?
I can hear it.
Okay.
We need to hear him if they acknowledge it. Yeah.
Mr. Frost.
Good evening, members of the council. Um, unfortunately, uh, we did, we did accept the ID.
Could you introduce yourself first?
Oh, my name is George Frost, um, owner, and my wife, Antonia Frost, owner as well.
You're, I need to write your address and your name on that, there.
Um, unfortunately, um, we do accept responsibility for it. Um, on the circumstance, what happened is, um, my wife happened to be working. This is our first non-compliance in over, I believe, 10 years or eight, between eight and 10 years. And, um, we take it very seriously. Um, all of our, all of our employees that, um, that do work with us have been very, very conscious about checking IDs with cigarettes, beer, other, other items as well. And, um, it just happened this one day, my wife was working by herself, and her sister happened to stop in the store, and she had to run to the restroom as, you know, being a, being a sole proprietor, we're usually there, either her or myself. And, um, she was gone less than five minutes. And, um, unfortunately, that's when, um, that's when the, the police officer and the underage person came in. And, um, and my sister-in-law checked the ID, but she mistaken it with the, with the cigarettes. And, um, we, we keep all the dates, and we have the, we have the register and, and, but she just mistaken it for the, for the cigarette instead of the beer. So, we do apologize, and, um, we're very conscious about that. And, um, it's one of our, one of our big concerns that we, that we take very seriously.
Okay, thank you. Since, uh, we've had everybody else, anyone from Patrick's French Bakery here?
Yep.
That wish to come to speak? You'll sign in and give us your name?
My name's Judy Justin. I'm the manager for Patrick's Bakery and Cafe. Um, yes, we did fail our compliance check. Our retail person did check the ID, but she did not obviously check the year or notice that it said under 21 on it. Um, we do have, um, we do have steps implemented in our training and with, um, all the employees that work with us. Um, it's posted above their time clock, it's posted by their schedules, it's posted on the registers. The POS systems themselves, when wine is purchased, asks for the ID. Um, she just went through all the steps and didn't bother to double-check the date, so.
Did you, um, terminate that employee, or is she still working, or?
She is no longer with the company.
Is that your policy, if it happens?
Um, not necessarily. Um, it, uh, depends on, um, the circumstance that it was under. But she was, um, definitely reprimanded and spoken to, and all employees were, again, trained in on the steps to take for alcohol sales.
Okay, thanks. Um, I think you said your name was Bill from Super America. Did you sign in and, could you do that for, um?
So we had a record? While he's signing in, is there anybody else out there that wants to speak on behalf of any of these businesses? Okay, hearing none.
Okay, I'm going to move, um, to conduct, um, that we had this hearing, um, I'm going to move to suspend the license to sell alcohol for five days from these businesses, for five consecutive days, that we levy a fine against the establishments in the amount of $1,000, and that we're requiring a meeting with the public safety director to present an individual establishment plan to ensure eliminating any future actions of this kind, and to further require a manager to attend an alcohol compliance and sales awareness presentation conducted by a private firm approved by public safety with all the costs to be paid by the establishment.
Second.
We got a first, second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
May I have one item before you close the meeting?
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to invite, um, Jim Toppetsfer to come up one more time to tell us about another city event. Richfield's just bustling with things happening.
Thank you, council, members Sandell, and members of the council. Yeah, we do lots of events, one after the other, it seems like. Uh, so all, you mentioned August 4th, uh, an event happening there from the Historical Society. Well, earlier that morning, uh, Saturday, August 4th, we do our, uh, annual Urban Wildland Half Marathon and 5K event, which benefits Wood Lake Nature Center. This is the 10th time we're doing this, so it's our 10th annual. Um, and, uh, you know, uh, we've gotten very good at doing it. It's a, an event that runners often come back to. The ones that have come all 10 years get a special hat and special recognition, and it should be a fun event.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I only have one very brief item, and that is just to remind the council, but more for members of the viewing audience, that the next, um, city council meeting in August is on Monday, August 13th, because of the election on the Tuesday of 14th. So, Monday, August 13th. That's it.
And did, we, we already canceled the, the second one, right?
And the second meeting in August has been canceled.
Right.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, claims and payroll. So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Since we don't have any other items on the agenda, I move for adjournment.
I want to say congratulations to our Mayor Pro Tem for such a well-facilitated meeting.